Thank you everyone for being at the City of Parksville's regular city council meeting for Monday, November seventh. Glad to have everyone here. And if you would, Councilman Dean, if you would pick us up with an invitation, we will be followed up by Sir.
Good to talk with you. Thank you for bringing us together this afternoon to do business of the city council. Help everything that we think, say, and do be limited to all of our citizens, be right, and watch over this city as you have been doing. We ask for continued blessing from this city and all the council and all of our elected officials and all of our employees, all of our first responders. Please do with them as we roll back here in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the first order of business, a quick order of minutes from the last meeting, I would entertain a motion with a way to reading of an approved minutes from the October first regular city council meeting and the November first special city council meeting. So I have a motion in a couple of seconds. All those in favor of approving the minutes from those two meetings? Any opposed? So I say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? Minutes are approved. And now, to your turn, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward in. Oh, just read off the list. Mister Askins, I see your name on the list. If you would please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to the next question.
Where do you live on Lake Shore Drive?
I know that's going to be hard.
You should know that's a difficult town.
You can do it.
Dan Askins, five 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 Lake Shore Drive. My name is Dan Askins. I live at five 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 Lake Shore Drive with my wife Susan. My property also touches McLeod Road, giving us a rear entrance to our home. My mother, Judy Jacobs, who's here, lives behind us at five twenty McLeod Road. Susan and I have lived in the Judge Baxley House for several years and love it. The neighborhood is beautiful and the neighbors are fantastic. Our little piece of Parksville is a treasure. Over the past few years, we've watched McLeod Road deteriorate and develop sinkholes, which seem to stem from faulty pipes carrying groundwater from Goodson Road. When several neighbors asked the City of Parksville to address the issue, the city's first response was that McLeod Road is a private, privately owned, and therefore not the city's responsibility. When we pushed for a further meeting, the town manager came to McLeod to meet with neighbors. He brought the new city attorney with him, who by no coincidence happens to be the same attorney who won the lawsuit brought by Calmia Place residents over road paving responsibilities. This seems a little heavy-handed, basically come get us if you really want to fight. The latest solution, solution is to require citizens to wheel their trash cans down and back up McLeod Road to a place of safety for city employees, completely disregarding the safety and well-being of residents in the process. Evidently, it's okay for old woodwomen, infirm gentlemen with heart conditions, and the physically handicapped to fall into a hole, rinse their bags, or have a heart attack while carrying up to three loaded trash cans down the hill and back up again on a quarter-mile round trip. Hey Carl, don't worry about that heart attack. Just be at the bottom of the hill and we'll pick you up.
I'll be there.
We've tried to work with the city on this issue, and have been rebuffed at every turn. Shoulder shrugs and passing the buck is not acceptable. Stormwater from Goodson Road is being dumped onto McLeod Road, which is causing significant and continuous damage. Goodson Road is indisputably not a private road. At this point, we have little recourse as neighbors but to block the stormwater drains that come from Goodson and let the city spend the money to take care of their water on their road. Alternatively, Parksville can work with its citizens to amediary the issue on McLeod Road. That seems to be a much better solution. I'm asking you, the city council, to represent us in this matter. No more nasty granite levers, no more shoulder shrugs, no more take this trash and shove it. Find the appropriate authority at the city, county, and state levels and get the problem fixed. I appreciate your consideration and look forward to a speedy resolution. I made copies for the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Askins. Appreciate you coming to share with us tonight. Hey, Mister Weaver. If you would.
All right.
Please, for the sake of the record, just state your name and address for us and keep your comments too.
I'm Braden Weaver, five fifty-one Lake Shore Drive. Makes the neighbor to Mister Dan in his life. What I have presented is information that I share with the mayor and council, and of course, the city manager, and of course, the city clerk. The main topic at the front page, there are five bullet points here. And again, to reiterate, we as a community, from Redfern to McLeod to Lake Shore, as you can see here tonight, we're concerned, we want to call it to action, we're asking for the city to help us. As you can see, there have been challenges, just like the city dealt with in your ordinance, four 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 two, that you all had final reading on August the ninth of twenty twenty-two, authorizing plenty of stormwater improvements. We in turn, as a small segment of community, ask for some guidance and assistance. One of the challenges is, we've had meetings, people come to visit, but no one's really said, let's sit down and talk about this. This is why we're here. We want to sit down, we need the help, we need your assistance. You know how the DOT works. Let's work together to try to find a resolution, just like Dan referenced. On another note, the second bullet, McLeod Road challenges rain from the outfall point at the lake, Crestwood Lake, some three hundred-plus feet up to a drainage, storm drainage area. That water comes from Goodson across the neighbor's yard and of course, into McLeod Drainage. When there's too much rain, what happens is the former mayor's backyard floods, former mayor's backyard floods, as well as the Goodsons and also the Poplivas. So we have a challenge there. There are currently three open sinkholes, seven feet deep, along the run of the stormwater drain. And there are six more city prepared areas. The challenge here is, as we talked before, many that came to visit, like you, Daniel, what's happened over the years, it seems to be some assistance assisting with taking care of the potholes until, like Dan referenced, you all had challenges with Calmia. We have no relationship with Calmia, we are not an HOA, we are concerned citizens that pay our taxes, and we need your attention. The fourth bullet point, the residents of McLeod Road were not aware that the same road was privately owned. I personally found out about ten years ago, whenever Tom Moore came to me to run an underground cable, and that underground cable, they said, I own to the middle of the road. I said, no, I can show you my plaque. I don't own to the middle of the road. So there was some confusion with DOT even about ten years ago. So, who knows what, but that was my first indication. I have lived at five fifty-one Lake Shore Drive for the past twenty-three years. The home I lived in was built nineteen fifty-two. So McLeod Road has been around since about nineteen forty-one, and then really recognized by the city maybe around nineteen sixty, I'm not sure. Last bullet point, local research shows the owners of McLeod Road are the McLeod family, who long since passed away. And in the state of South Carolina, private roads, of course, we all know are not taxed. Therefore, we cannot trace any activity to McLeod. So, we are in a quandary. What I presented also is the second part, and I believe you have the original, Mister Moore. There's petitions signed by the majority of these folks that own this road from our community, again, from Redfern down to McLeod, down to Lake Shore. We're asking for your support, and so I submit that hopefully will be included in your minutes. Finally, the third portion here is a two-page, I guess chronological order of things that happened to my wife and I in the past twenty-three years as residents of Lake Shore Drive. We also have a cottage that is based at McLeod. And our main drive is based at McLeod, as well as a trash pickup has been, and debris and recyclables have been on McLeod for twenty-three years. Again, I just reiterate what Dan mentioned there. You know, you send out a letter, I didn't get a letter, so I don't know. I place Lake Shore, I assimilate what's going on in the community. So I'll be taking my two or three cans down along with the other twenty tomorrow, so they'll stretch along Lake Shore Drive for pickup. And again, there are challenges there, there's a safety issue, we have small children in the area. We were concerned about Halloween, and I thank you, I believe, Daniel, for sending out Parksville Police that actually put up a barricade, so we didn't have any injuries during Halloween. One last moment comment is that citizens, the employees mainly of City of Parksville, over this twenty-three years have always been very efficient and helpful as they came to do repairs. Up until that point, you all had to come there and place issues, and everything stopped at that point. There were a couple of other simple things, like the border plate initiation, and of course, recently with the Parksville Police Department. Thank you for your time. We would like to be back in December and do a follow-up. And we're also trying to love for you to come to your district area and talk to us through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time and also coming to us this year, and participating in the process. No one else on the registration seat. Also want to thank you for this history. I look forward to looking at that, just hoping for that wrinkles that we haven't seen before. And I'll say on the record too, this situation sucks. I think we all agree. We don't like any better than you do. And you're absolutely correct. One of the hinge points here is that our hands are so tied because of the lawsuit on Calmia. Once you go to court, it just takes away so much of our flexibility and our options. So thank you for recognizing that at least. We are absolutely here to advocate on your behalf with DOT or whatever agency might be involved. But again, I don't know what else to say, it was emphasized that we, our options are so few in ways that we can help, bring, and advise.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, maybe a city manager could speak to the drainage off of Goodson and to toward McLeod.
Sure. So, Goodson Road is this SCDOT road. It is owned and maintained by the state, tax is paid for that road. McLeod Road is not. McLeod Road as we know, as we've talked about, is a private road. So what we understand is that at some point, and I believe the history is actually correct, we were sometime in the forties, there was a pipe attached from Goodson Road that then drains directly onto McLeod, and McLeod then drains down towards Lake Shore, and Lake Shore eventually ends terminus at Crestwood. DOT has, we are friends with DOT, but they have made it known many, many times that if a pipe that is critical or a ditch is critical to their system, that they did not install, inspect it, do any of the things they're paid for, it is not theirs. And they refuse to set ownership of it. I believe, about the way I was busted with it, they decided to only one step put on the cloud because it's not something that you maintain or do with. And so, the water from Goodson, even though it is coming off of Goodson from a DOT road, is making its way through a private system, a little bit late when the house was built or something like that. And that's as best we can understand what had happened. Pipe has now collapsed at a junction that Goodson, the turn to McLeod, and it's excavating underneath the ground. It is essentially flooding, but flooding in the ground that we can't see, and it's flooding off the point there and causing a cavity. But those plates that we put over for safety, I believe are, there's emptiness in any of those places. So that's why we put out police to have a, cones put up and a barricade put up, so no one would discourage anyone from driving over that. And that is where we are today. It is unsafe as far as I can tell, Ken, and that's why we had to pull back from the situation. Again, Goodson is state maintained, and there is an argument, I think we may, about anything that's connected to the Goodson pipe, and that's where we can make some headway. We have been in contact with the center's office about this. We are trying to work with our local resident engineer. It is an uphill battle. That is as hard as, like I can put it. But this is a STDOT road going to a private road that was at one point probably a drive, and now it's been sold off to do it for a while.
It has not been sold off?
No, no, no. The house is around, but not the road itself.
None of our tile shows that we own any of the businesses.
We should, right. And I understand there wasn't this house or stuff, we probably will with our own title search, so we can help to look at that. But this is a property of no intention, as far as we understand it, Paul.
Quick, quick, Paul can't rely on this here. There's only one way in and one way out, and that's over those sinkholes, that stop sign where McLeod is. And Goodson, Goodson relies on these deteriorating pipes to get their water off of Goodson, go behind Tom Goodson and Pop Lava's house, and then carry it on down to the outfall crossing over Lake Shore, which is probably maintained. But see what's happening, even if you go down there and look, it's kind of horrifying, but it also is jeopardizing Dominion Energy's easement, your easement for water, your easement for sewer, and we can, and trash pickup too, so y'all have a dog in the fight too, because it's interfering with it. With your easements that y'all have too, and Dominion Energy has too, so I don't know if Dominion's been down there and looked or not, but see, you could really help us because we can get together and do it, because it's still endangering us all. See, your easements are in jeopardy too. So that would be, that's a segue if you want to call that, I don't like that word, but that's the way where we, if we got sued, I think it's different than Calmia, because you were talking, and I don't know about Calmia, but I thought Calmia was paved in the road. We're talking about underneath the ground, we're talking about real infrastructure. If all we've been looking for was to pave the road, we probably would shift in and go on that already paved. But it's underneath there, it's what's decayed, and that creates an interest on y'all's part as well as ours to protect your easement and to protect our rights going up the valley. I mean, that's why the trash truck doesn't come down anymore, because it's unsafe. Too heavy, I get it, but even backing off even more now, stay on Lake Shore Drive, and I get wound up about it, because if it's all about winning or losing, then let's get together. We don't, we don't sue DOT, and we don't sue the city. We want the city and the neighbors to join in the lawsuit, sue DOT if that's what we got to do. But I talked with DOT Paul Holtzer about, about a month ago. He talked with me, he conversed back and forth, he was off, he's cut off contact with him. So I don't know what that means, but those deteriorating pipes have been used, put in there in probably nineteen sixty, because that's when the herds gave easement to, to the city. Have you seen that, have you gotten that easement, Mister Moore, in your file, if you look?
I haven't seen that.
And I think there's some precedent for this too, because I've been told that back in the day, DOT and the City of Parksville worked together to pave, dent, I forget the name of that, I can't remember that, this cross from Damascus Road. There's art, there is some precedent, and I think for the city and DOT working together helps some people, even though it is a private road.
That's all, sir. And I'll say too, we absolutely have a dog in the fight, because we represent you. And you have a problem, even beyond the legal side of it. I would respect the agenda, but you agree for Mister Weaver?
Just briefly, I just want to let you know, Dominion Energy, I called two weeks, the emergency number, asking to come look to make sure, because I'd like to live another twenty years and look at the line, which is right beside my property where people have to drive across. And of course, that erosion is coming under. Believe it or not, I have had no phone call, nobody showed up my door calling the Dominion Energy Emergency Line. Twice.
Yes, would you, would you say?
Six hundred Redfern Lane. And another thing too, is this is for the supply of road, how much exercise and control the owner. You know, the cloud don't care about it. If y'all wanted to bring the road in, you could do that, you could bring in action, nobody's gonna answer the complaint. And you'll get a deed to the property, or DOT would get a deed to the road too. If you went that way, action would quiet the tide, right? But see, if that's a private road, and nobody cares about it except the people who live down there, we can't go down there and dig up, dig anything up and shut it off, because then, because you got an easement. Dominion's got an easement. We can't interfere with the easement. You know, it would be ridiculous for us to drop a bomb and say, hey, we're gonna go dig up those pipes and fill up the holes. That wouldn't make any sense either, because that's, that's just not the way to approach it, but I mean, we got to have some relief, because you got to look at it, you got to go look at it and see what it's like. Get down there and you can get way down underneath there, it's a real cavity, it's real dangerous. I'm telling you, it is. And every time, we're in and out, that's the only way we can get in, the only way we can get out. Imagine, every day, you got to ride by something, you got to look it down there, get on out, come back and do the same thing, coming back in. I mean, you don't, literally speaking, how about if a car falls in the hole? You know, and then what's going to happen to the exercise of those easements temporarily or for an extended period of time? I think that DOT is, I've never dealt with DOT like that before, but if DOT is that hard to deal with, then I think you need to talk to Dan Plowler, is that his name, the city attorney, right? Yeah, okay, we'll talk to him, get him to start, we need to establish a dialogue between ourselves, that's why it's not happening.
He's in for us instead of against us.
Well, I mean, we got to have some help, we got to have y'all do it, we got to have y'all's help to get this done. I know we do, and we probably, we probably need to join in a lawsuit and sue DOT. The city and the neighbors need to sue DOT, and I don't know what impact Dominion Energy might have on it, but I, you know, I'm not familiar with politics in this part. Really, but that's where we need to be. If DOT won't do anything, Dan Plowler, is that his first name? No, you, Daniel Plowler, leave it. Then I recommend getting Daniel Plowler on board, get him to talk to some people, and let's go ahead and sue whatever we got to sue, unless Paul Holtz, find out what, ask, ask Mister Plowler to find out from Holtz or those lawyers, because he's, Plowler's worked the system before as a lawyer, from the law firm that he works in. Okay, and they, if they don't know what to do, I think Mister Plowler might work for Smith and Robinson, Smith and Robinson, Smith, he's the Speaker of the House now, right? Then he can take, take Lewis's place. I'm pretty sure that's right, so we just need y'all's help to listen to the political aspects of it, the legal aspects of it, to help something get done, because what if I, I don't know, there's a house that's been selling there right now, but I don't know who's gonna want to buy anybody's house that's up in there. You got to write over the sinkhole. We've had two years to think about all this, right? I mean, and we're not getting moved, you know what I'm saying?
We need to, we need to move along in the agenda. Mister Poppala, real briefly, if you could.
Very briefly, Sharon Poppala, five four seven Lake Shore Drive. I just want to reiterate and point out that we are not an HOA, the neighborhood is not an HOA, and we are hamstrung because we can't fill in those holes without accepting some responsibility for the infrastructure underneath it. If we went, if we pulled our money and covered those holes up, and then it crumbled again, you would come after us because we had taken that initiative. So, we, we're asking for your help with us, because it is a private road, and we're hamstrung into what we can do. We need your help. And I'm gonna lose the mailbox in that big gray hole.
But I wouldn't say anything else, but the city can bring in action, you want the road? You know, see, the road can be taken over by the city or the county or the state, however that works, but we got, we're going to deal with DOT getting it straightened.
Oh, you don't want the city to take the road? We don't know, we have no way to maintain a road, money to, that's the last thing.
I, and I agree with that.
Let's work together. Of course, you remember when you and I were neighbors, I was at that Goodson property where the former mayor lived down there, it flooded thirty-five years ago down there. So it's a long-going problem. My hope at this time is we can get Mister Berry or someone, I don't know, you talk with him, some of the DOT people that we did know that are real people that can come, I rode up and down there Sunday, and it's a mess. I mean, but see, you see all the patchings there, I think it was about ten, eleven years ago, we can't even put that sewer line underneath it. Was it sewer line?
Yes.
Yeah, put sewer line down underneath all the stuff that was there, on that road and Goodson and others, and so all the patchwork has been done. People have been there before, I'm sure, but working with DOT is, is the solution. And if it takes a ton of contact, and Miss Christie Hall, the head of DOT, then we ought to do that. She won't, maybe give us the potential conclusion. So I think originally there's a man in Florence that I met with, with the city manager and I came to him with his name, that was inside the drainage over there, with a regional fellow in Florence. He was, he was level-headed, he was easy to talk with. I tried to get him over here and he'll get that Sunday issue. That's what we need, somebody to get eyes on that, and again, assist y'all with it, you know, the city can't.
Right, I was a little, being a little bit facetious when I said that, but the process of acquiring the road is real simple. But thank you, bud.
How did you fund ordinance four 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 two? How did you get the two hundred thousand, man? Your own ordinance?
Those numbers were gathered from, from DOT, from the, the meeting that.
Where did the funds come from? COVID funds, American?
Utility.
Utility?
And that was calculated based on, it was a public road, road working with DOT as a public property, and it was based on the amount of impact that would have. So the expenditure of public funds on public property like that can be dropped if it impacts in a multitude of ways.
They got twenty families sitting around here.
Just because that final business is blocked, and then we're done. That's both roads.
I got a question. How many people sitting in the audience actually live on McLeod Road? Yeah, I drove there, I think Sunday. Thank you.
Anything else, what else?
I sympathize, of course. The problem is, maybe to a recall, one is private road, public money, you know, we cannot legally spend public money on top of.
We're not asking.
Okay. I'm just looking at the big picture.
It's DOT's got the problem.
Second thing is where the drainage is tied into DOT drainage, I think that's where Paul is coming from.
I can, that's his job.
Probably is the best way to get it on. But I would also encourage all of us, you know, if we go that route, is there a fallback position? DOT's been doing it a long time. No point intending, but is there a fallback position that you lose every round with DOT? I don't know. Hire a genealogist, find out who owns it.
Johnny, how, how did? You know, and I live on. I'm not advocating litigation. I mean, it's usually take too long.
The problem is on Goodson, Johnny, not on McLeod. The problem is on Goodson, the pipes come in front there, that's where it needs to be fixed. Have that joint right there, let it go on down Goodson.
It ties into Goodson.
See, one thing I've had a lot of time to think about this, but see, back in the day in nineteen sixty, I talked to Bobby Goodson, he grew up down there. So see, why didn't Goodson, when the, when the DOT took that, why didn't they run straight on out Goodson across Lake Shore? Why they go left and then turn?
Because there was a spill. It was easier for them.
See what I mean? I think probably the developers, McLeod most.
Well, I think Sharon called me maybe a year ago or so, and we put, I found an old map from nineteen forty-one, and it showed McLeod family owning the property off of Palm Avenue going down to the lake. And she was asking me, you know, who owned that? My opinion was it's a private road, it's probably the heirs of that family. You know, and Paul would know more about that than I do, you know, but, you know, as how that goes, but so that's something I think about, you know, let's go the DOT route, if that fails, is there a fallback position? You know, I don't know.
That's your job. You're my fallbacks.
You know, see, I think probably a lot of go, I know we're taking more time, I suppose, with y'all being gracious with us, but, but see, those pipes there, they're wearing out. I think DOT probably put them in in the beginning, and, and I don't know why they didn't get easements, there's no legal act. I only see, I don't see, I don't see, I've got somebody search records for me, I can't find. The only thing I ever found was that, was that sewer line running back behind. They probably made you move it forward, didn't they, out of the way, because it's, but anyway, that, I don't even know, I don't find any easements from anybody anywhere about anything in there other than that sewer thing.
Who authorized this sewer to be dug up a few years, ten years, fifteen years ago, down at McLeod? It was a private road. I mean, they came and dug that road up.
Well, it's probably, it's Leon's.
No, that's, Leon, Leon Kennican's had to sue, and I think. No, that's, that Leon, Leon Kennican's had to sue, and I think it's cause it's y'all's sewer, and put, y'all should've been on notice cause the roots were going in there, so you would put on notice under the tort claims act, and that's how they brought the suit, then they sprung it, and they finally got it done. That's how, but y'all haven't serviced your easement with it or anything.
That's when Leon's house backed up.
Right, but I don't think, I can't find any easement to the city to go down the road. I mean, who, who signed the easement to put the suit, you see what I mean?
That's my question.
I, I don't know where they put this, but, but we don't, we don't care about.
Does that sewer belong to the city? And it's on McLeod Road, on that private property?
This, it, it's a mess, huh?
It was probably put in at some point, and put up, the guy who's been signing it, the guy who owned the property. I'm not sure that sewer's put in, uh, but if we worked on it, we would've cut it up and fixed it. But that sewer is further up, down, away from this issue, if it was a sewer that was causing the issue, we would've fixed it.
Paper, we're really legal paper, but many things, cause you're there anyway, DOT's pipes are there. Whether they got easement or not, their pipes are there, see, that's what I'm, would be thinking, that's where their, yeah, their pipes are there.
And the other thing, I guess, uh, Daniel, the concern with the, um, the garbage cans and the recycling, is that the best we can do with our solution there?
No.
You know, we don't wanna put anybody in danger, not residents, not city residents.
I don't want it to feel like that, cause it's three football fields from my house, where you want. And Sharman's gonna be upset because we're gonna have fourteen cans back in her front yard.
Five forty-six.
No, I'm gonna charge. The city, I'm gonna put it into the fund for the sinkhole.
Three football.
We're gonna put the trash bags in the sinkhole, fill it up. We can, we can certainly allow the trash cans to remain down there if I can fit a dumpster for the time being. Dumpster?
On whose property? Are you gonna put a dumpster?
That's the question.
What's wrong with the small truck you use them now?
It's way nearby on our car, I, I know you're, I'm seeing your vehicle coming down.
Yeah, I see the, the, my three sitting cars coming up our driveway.
We have six, we have six sitting cars on this track, I think.
No, I'm just saying, you all are managing to come through because you come up and go in our public path and go on down every single time, right over our lawn, right down our street, private apparently, and what do we do about that? You know, big trucks, and, but you can't send trash, little trash trucks, like they have. Oh, sorry, um, Sarah Rush, and, um, uh, four hundred McLeod, top of the hill.
One, one more thing, I'll, I'll promise.
Yeah, I can say one more thing.
I promise this is the last time, I promise. But see, has DOT addressed the issue about the condition of their pipes? Have they talked, anybody talked to DOT about what's wrong down there?
On Goodson.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's one way in, no, on McLeod, one way in and one way out for good, for wreck, for McLeod and, and reference. That, people that live there, they got passed out every time they get that McLeod stop sign. So, has DOT addressed the issue, uh, that exists down there? Has DOT talked to anybody from the city about it or see anybody approach it? What's DOT's position? We've been waiting for two years, I mean, really, I, I didn't come here to.
Listen, we're not DOT.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm talking about, I know you're not, but it's the spirit of cooperation, helping people, the heartbeat of the city. Right, they have heartbeat of the peoples right here, I mean, we gotta have, it's dangerous.
Y'all are, y'all are correct, that the more we can try to cooperate and work with you in this DOT, there will be, um,
Yeah, case, just real quickly.
And would you, just picture after this.
Uh, how Cummings, five five eight Red Fern Lane, we're just connected to McLeod, which is our access out of where we, where we live. Just real quickly, what we're asking for is you to take the lead on this, and work with us, but you to take the lead. Cause they're not answering, responding to anybody sitting here or not sitting here as part of the neighborhood. So, we need your influence, your connections, um, and your push, please.
Gustan Lap, five thirty-three Lake Shore Drive, um, just a quick comment, I was on the phone, you're filing. And what are the, what if there's a file, what you need ankles up there, it's a safety issue.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Fire in wood, please.
Me in the bottom of the hill.
Where's my trash can?
Okay. I really, really do appreciate all of you coming to speak, you give us some, some tidbits, follow up on this, this week, your history, you know, uh, every time I have some crazy idea, I call, uh, Mayor, uh, Moore. Uh, usually says we've already been down that road, but I'm gonna keep coming up with these crazy ideas and, uh, hopefully one of them.
Well, we'll be back in December.
We'll see you then.
And can manager, and can manager Moore continue to, can manager Moore continue to work with us on our garbage pickup? Cause we never really resolved.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that just kinda got dropped.
Yeah, you're just talking about options, not, not necessarily what we're gonna do, the things we could do, and it's, it's what, what suits, suits you best.
I remember saying it starts tomorrow.
It starts today.
Our pickup should start to be tomorrow. What do we do?
Take our own garbage.
Where?
To take an old man's lecture. So, my, so, to answer the question before, um, the reason why we're not bringing the park in down is because we were having to drive up onto Mr. Berry's property to properly. And, uh, truck is heavier than a regular pickup when it picks up garbage, and we can understand that. So, we did make a judgment call, as I did mention in the letter, unfortunately, that we'll be monitoring and watching that sinkhole. When it collapsed in the middle, that plate does not, does not cover what that sinkhole's doing. And so, the sinkhole is much more dangerous than I believe that it's showing.
Yeah.
So, we did, we did make the call that I was not going to allow city employees to go down the road. Because again, our position is that it's a private road that is a driveway for the residents. So, it doesn't mean we cannot work with DOT on it, but, uh, for the time being, I would say that we could definitely suspend the idea of having to roll, bring roll carts back to the hill. I completely understand three football fields where they're walking, and certainly, if, if no one minds in the time being, along Lake Shore Drive, potentially across your property, ma'am, allowing the roll carts to remain there until this certain time to bring the trash down to it. At this point, I cannot allow a roll cart to, to go down that road.
Okay, one question, if you're wanting to put it on my property, are you going to amend my property? From the roll carts digging into the ground there?
Ma'am, I'm not, I'm not putting the roll carts.
Want to play rent?
I'm not, I'm not putting the roll carts there, I'm just asking if they can bring them down onto the, no.
On the road?
Drive is a, there's, that section of Lake Shore Drive, and the research I've, I'm seeing that CTOT finds it to be a private road as well. So, I have. So, from, from Lake Shore from Goodson to the end of McLeod is showing it's a private road as well.
Wow.
That doesn't necessarily mean it isn't owned by somebody else, or maybe some other entity. But it does not, means it's not owned by, named by DOT, so I would say.
Well, where are you wanting the roll carts? Because there's our property, then there's the road, and then there's our property. So, are you advocating putting, where you have?
I advocate on, on a safe spot on the road to allow, so it's not damaging the property.
Okay, because if you, if you wanna put them on my property, I would ask that you amend my property.
Understood, I'm not, but I'm not asking you to put them anywhere, this is for, this is your workforce. Now, we also, if you do have the ability, Goodson Road is definitely a spot we can come on. So, Goodson Road, if you can walk through or go through it, then.
Well, the big down truck been going, was it going all the way down Lake Shore Drive? Like you used to, is that what you say? Well, then, how about your man walk up to my house and get cans, cause he works for you, but he said my wife doesn't wanna do it.
That, but that sinkhole spread across that road, you know. Where you gonna go around it now? I looked down there yesterday, another thing, it spreads, it's, it's spread across that hole, this can fall in, it can fall in soon, I think. It is going all the way, when you kinda wheel up and let it go out, just digging out deeper over there now. You got, you getting on top of it, being an ice man, I think, that's, yes, right?
So, this is just off the top of the head, if I live there, and that road is getting so bad, and it's our road, your road, that you live on, if I live over there, one street over and everything, I'd go out there and do something about it, but that might not be the right force of action, and it might cause something else down the road. But you gotta be able to get in and out of the road down there.
You have to stop the root problem, which is the water from the.
You do, the, the root problem, but the immediate problem, and it is, and it is getting bad, I was on the road there Sunday, it's bad. Is there some material, some type, not a permanent thing, that you guys?
A bigger plane.
One of those places is, uh, in Iowa, and the other two are in cities. So, we've had tried to do things, but it becomes a mess.
A road, a road with wide plates.
Just saying, it's going even further, I'm just saying, eventually, it's gonna cave.
Oh, yeah.
So, rather than wait, cause then while we're waiting to find a solution, is there anything that you, the residents, can do that wouldn't be permanent, but yet would at least, from a safety standpoint, maybe?
We're gonna all use. Does the city have toll booths? Can I take a toll booth at my yard?
With, with all due respect, I've spoken to Mr. Moore about some possible solutions. I'm sorry, Sarah Vaughn, five hundred six McLeod. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Moore about some possi- possible sol- solutions, and he is very knowledgeable about what can be put in that space. It all sounds like it would be, um, very costly, and I, for one, am not a retired attorney. There, there only, there's only so much that we can do to amend the infrastructure, even temporarily, that is within any personal budget on a road that is not legally ours as residents.
That's a big point.
It's a catch twenty-two.
It is.
And I can see Bobby's point, you know, even if everything goes great with the DOT, it's not gonna be a fix, that's not it.
Right.
And erosion will probably, at some point, I would you to do something before DOT makes its, their decision.
When the Ryan comes, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, exactly, and it's coming, just the end of this week.
So, can you read back what Mr. McGee just said, we can fill those holes in? Or recommend that we fill that?
I'm saying, if I live there, and this, my safety depends upon something I could do, because DOT is a slow looking process. As they said today, Brad, if they get in there and do something, if it is a safety issue, and it's my road that I'm driving across, is there something that you, the residents, can do that is non-permanent, to at least alleviate it? And because if it caves on in and nobody can get up to Redford Houses, then what happens?
If we get some solution, uh, that covers that sinkhole, like a big steel plate?
A brick or a flare, or some, anything that covers the.
What, what, what the trash pick up? Well, how, how do you, what, how do you make your determination that it's safe enough for your trucks to go across? I would have to consult with my engineer staff, and, I mean, it's, it's something I can't answer right now. Can we, can we consult with your engineer in advance before we try to make some kind of solution to say, this is acceptable? I can't give you, we can't give you a solution to do that now, you can definitely talk. You can tell me if it's something that's not a solution, but. Yeah, you can talk to me, I guess you can talk to the NOD staff, so. If you, if you could, just not involve them, they, they can use me to. Give you ideas, you go to them, and you come back to me and you say it's okay. I'm just trying to clarify a page.
I understand, Dan will definitely talk.
All right, well, thanks again, everybody, we're gonna move on to the rest of the agenda, um, personally, if anybody, you're welcome to stay, the meetings are gridding, really, but, um, you're, you're welcome to go and leave too. If you'd like to, I'll give you that opportunity, go ahead and step out. Um, but we're coming up to a proclamation here. Um, this, uh, anyone here from Care South?
You have to state your name and whatever.
I'm going to, um, go ahead and read some highlights off of this, uh, this proclamation. Um, this is about World Day Day, it goes back to December first eighty-eight, with the original goal of raising money and awareness, fighting prejudice, uh, improving education about HIV and AIDS. Today, it is transitioned, it is also includes a huge component of celebrating the enormous advances we have already made, um, treating, um, HIV and AIDS and, and the, the patients who have it. Um, but we also need to be conscious that the problem hasn't gone away, the other word, treatments are better now, is still a very big issue. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, there's thirty-eight point four million people in the world, uh, with HIV, one point two million nine states. Nineteen thousand plus in South Carolina, and last year, there were almost three hundred people diagnosed with HIV or AIDS here in Darlington County. Um, so, and whereas, uh, Care South Carolina's mission is to compassionately provide professional health and life care services that enhance the quality of life to all segments of our community. I am proud, therefore, Casey Hancock, mayor, and city of Arsenal, to hereby proclaim December first, two thousand twenty-two, as World AIDS Day.
Thank you, thanks for hanging out. I'm sorry, y'all. Okay, um, consent agenda is next, received as information, um, thank you to our departments for preparing your reports. I've never taken the time to say that before, we do appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Fran, do you have anything else to say?
Uh, I have a few, but, um, just first, I'm gonna go ahead and use one second to introduce the new hires, we're gonna have Michelle do it, since there are two new hires.
Um, we have been very excited to add to the Tourism and Communications Department, um, Haley Gates, she is our new commu-, um, Marketing and Special Projects Coordinator, and also LaShawn Re- Rees, and she is our new, um, Special Events Assistant. So, we're very excited to have them on board.
Special, was it Special Projects Coordinator? And if they explain to you that means everything at all? I just wanna make sure, yeah, okay. Okay, we're very glad to have you, welcome, um, look forward to working with you. And with the, the kind of plans and ideas that are floating around in, in the, in the key right now, I'm, I'm really excited to see what you guys come up with. We've got a lot of upside coming up, I'm kind of excited about it.
So, you know, which, we have, um, so coming up this Friday, Veterans Day, um, is, uh, Friday, November eleventh at eleven AM. We are anticipating quite a bit of rain, um, there's a tropical storm, Nicole, I think it's called, my weather adjustment.
Your mother is a professor?
Um, ignore it, it's a fucking weather, um, it's a cheap fire, so, anyway, um, we probably already moved that into TV comps, if we're looking at doing. I'm gonna be looking at the weather again Wednesday, just to confirm, we definitely don't wanna cancel, we have the facility to hold it, so we're looking, and we're looking at that time.
Call on Wednesday, but it's likely moving into the gym.
Yeah, all likely, and if it's not, it's a very long, don't worry, no worries with that, so, we will definitely post it out, so we'll be ample notice if that gets moved anywhere else. But we definitely are still keeping it going, we're not gonna cancel Veterans Day, it's very important.
What time, Friday?
Eleven, at eleven AM, November eleven. All right, and it's, uh, the program we put together, I'm very excited about, um, the staff's done a great job, playing together. Also, November seventeenth is our, uh, much-loved downtown Hollywood House, um, six to nine downtown Arsenal, come in one, come all, so be very excited. And then December tenth, Christmas parade, so, all the key, so, good job, well done, there's gonna be visiting, so, very excited. Um, we also are gonna have a Main Street leadership from MASC, um, Tuesday through summer sixth, council work session, so, I believe Jenny Boulder will be here to give us a work session, for all the council, of course, but publicly come. Um, so, she'll be here, uh, based on what's around MASC, or the Main Street from MASC, and what's kinda changing from the floor. And then last two things, we have our class compensation study ongoing, uh, this is something we budgeted for this past year. Uh, we've been looking at doing this for quite some time, remember we talked about this when we did the paper, increases for police? This is the follow-up, this is the main study that we're doing for the entire city staff. Uh, it takes a look at every position, every grade, and make sure that we are competitive across this, this area, whatever market you want to compete with. And when we do have that study complete, we'll be able to present to you guys an idea for potential rate increases for some of our employees who need it, or not competitively paid. We, um, we're hopeful that we are in a good range, but there's always one, so, that's ongoing right now, we hope to have that done. I believe it's coming back to HR, we submit in December, early December, we're really pushing hard, the staff, we can get this done, so we can have something for January to look at some potential pay adjustments, something like that. But that all depends on how quickly we can work, and all our staff is working on it, very, uh, so. And lastly, November eighteenth is gonna be the RFP for Canal District Deadline. I'm looking at, potentially, working with our consultant right now, potentially already extending that date to the end of November to allow some ample time for any, anyone who's interested in doing something with Canal District, to come back in this, so. I'll send it out probably this week sometime, looking at November thirtieth deadline, so you'll understand, that's been recommended to us, so. That's all I have this.
Um, Daniel?
Yeah.
The nineteenth training for, um, Main Street.
Is that the, another training, or is December sixth, or another training?
Sure, so the sixth is Jenny coming in to speak to council.
Right.
Right, and the sixth, the nineteenth of December is, we have Randy Wilson coming in to facilitate a workshop, that's at ten A M, that in addition. Um, it's, it's geared more towards those who are making decisions about the facades and A R B kind of focused panels, but we'd love to have city council to join us as well.
Thank you, Matt. Main Street staff, go on, down there, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, anything else I was getting, whatever?
I think I've got it. We'll go back.
All right, moving on to the business item six, uh, Resolution eleven twenty-two oh two. Um, approval to create a student council program in collaboration with Coker University and here in Hartsville, South Carolina. Um, Mr. Manager, would you mind giving us the plain English version of that?
Yeah, so this was something that comes with the call we brought to us, and something Columbia has started, and I believe we have a.
These are student by person.
You know, actually, would you like to do, could you, this is your baby, so you want to talk about this, or you want me to?
Um.
Ready, put your own spot.
I'm Christopher.
I've never met you before, how are you?
Just share, just share your idea that, that you had and share the information with me, I'll write that.
Sure, um.
And introduce yourself for everyone to listen.
And you're Chris. Um, Christopher Pearson, uh, the student by president of our Coker University, need my address too, or? Okay.
Rather than cover.
Yes, I cover, yeah, um, I'm working, I'm a good with Mr. Caldwell, about a student council, um, trying to collaborate more with the city of Hartsville, um, just. Instead of just having like the Hartsville and Coker doing their own thing that they invite the other party to, uh, just kind of collaborate more, uh, so that, um. You lost my words, uh, right there, but kind of just collaborate more, uh, so that both parties can benefit, uh, and create a stronger, um, college town, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, any, uh, uh, I'll hear, a motion to approve Resolution eleven twenty-two oh two.
Mr. Mayor, I salute and approve Resolution eleven dash twenty-two dash zero two.
All right, I have a motion, but I'm second, got a competing status, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Caldwell may know, this is a last, who will determine the backup of the council when it's still, so how, how's it gonna work, so what were you vision? So once we establish this, the goal is in the next week or so before December, we'll get with the student government. And then also address the, uh, principal of Hartsville High School, that we will have student government with Coker University as well as one or two high school senior. And we'll establish a number between council and student government once they, you know, run the proposal tool, there's actually a complete package that I'll share with you of how. These students in Columbia did there, so we can do, let's say, seven or nine members, and basically all it is, is they want to just share their input with council. But they also want to be ambassadors for the city, ambassadors for students that, you know, they pass through and say, hey, maybe this is a place I want to stay, just an extra arm of communication for them. So it's just gonna be one of those things that give even possibly staff an opportunity to grab an additional intern from, just in having that open communication.
So form a first, and then work out some, take it on, you model it, let's go.
They'll have their own little set of bylaws and everything, we'll go all that together, once we put them into existence.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, uh. Right, Caldwell. Um, okay, now we're ready for a vote, all those in favor of approving Resolution eleven twenty-two oh two, because in the case of I saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, but the ayes have it, Resolution eleven twenty-two oh two has passed, um, I'm looking forward to it, what's that, I had a comment. Oh, um, I'm excited about it, over the decades, the relationship between the college slash university and the city has waxed and waned, but it waned big time with COVID. I mean, it really took a, that relationship took a hit, just like the two entities themselves did, so, um, I'm glad you brought this to the table, thank you for your help with it. Um, I'm looking forward to it, it's gonna be good, it can't, it can't not be good. Okay, um, moving on to the next resolution, this is eleven twenty-two oh three, approval to authorize expenditure of a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds by the city of Hartsville. Mr. Manager, would you, uh, uh, do something for us, please?
Sure, um, so this is, again, a continuation discussion we had with the apartment under American Rescue Plan Act, so far we've obligated close to two point seven five of the three point seven five that we've had. And we've been looking for projects, uh, for the last million, um, not in total, but something that would have meaningful impact, and I know a lot of conversations have been about that. Something that kind of came to us, we've been talking about for a while, is police cameras, um, we have several cameras throughout the city, two hundred twenty-five cameras throughout the city. Um, we've had, they've been peace filled over several years, um, they come through different brands, they come through different, uh, purchases, they come, come across many different ways. And because of that, the peace feeling has happened, several have either, uh, out of service, have either, uh, are not, you know, are older now, perhaps the. Solar panel that was on it was all cutting edge, and, you know, five or six years ago now, it's not working as well as intended, but we have, you know, collie days, it doesn't have the battery for it, because the battery wasn't good at the time. And so, talking with police, this has been a, a conversation that we've had for the last two years, how do we reinvent our camera system in a meaningful way to protect our residents? And give confidence to, A, the residents, and our officers, build a good government. And so for the last two years, I've had staff, police dedicated to looking at what entity can come in and can work with us, with our system, not sell us. Something that is going to replace all our cameras, or this is a new thing, we have to do a whole new system, that would cost much more than what we're talking about here. And we finally found one that can do it, it can incorporate our existing cameras into, um, service right now, it can retrofit the ones that needed with power. It can also add in what we're talking about now is artificial intelligence, which is a new kind of cutting edge technology. And the idea with this is that we want to add in artificial intelligence, combining with the power of our police, and be able to save people's property lives, that's the idea. Um, stop things from happening, or they happen, let people know that they're not gonna go, they're gonna go on, stop any senseless tragedies that we've had recently, I think, yeah. So what we're looking at doing is, um, allocating five hundred thousand dollars of the arco money, remaining one million dollars, using it as a call to action. With several of our community partners we've already started talking to, and there's already been engagement with, and challenge them to meet us in the middle. And use for some of your dollars, help us make this a reality, and turn five hundred thousand dollars into one million dollars, that includes artificial intelligence cameras across the city. Licensed light readers protect people from taking children, cars, and doors, everything we can do to make sure that the city is protected across the board, that's what we're proposing tonight.
So Daniel, this is not go to that one company, you brought me something, one that said they could do this, this is not to go ahead and purchase their system for five hundred, this is just seeing money in hopes of getting more money?
So.
And if that didn't go, what would we, or what could we do with that?
So we've been talking, it is the same company we're talking about, we are gonna be engaging with, we have another company to talk to and see if there's something similar, although I think that that is, um, we're gonna, could actually have that conversation, I think, remember. Next week, I believe, it's gonna have that conversation again, um, the idea of that is that that's either going to either be a better system or achieve a rate, and the idea is that we need to still work on something in the same venue, same thing. But what we're doing is by doing this, by allocating the money now, it means we can have the money available, start the process with this company, who did choose to go that route. They will come and do a full value, or no, a proposal, they want to do a full evaluation of system, and hopefully, and I believe so, that is actually the worst case scenario, the million dollars. This could come in much lower, based on what it means, our money to handle in section two evaluation, so this allows us to move forward with that. Side commitment to them, that we can at least spend five hundred thousand dollars with this company there once we go, and move forward the process, get this started. So we're not asking for, when they come to do the actual proposal, we still will come back to spend the money, again, you'll have a full approval of that, let's just get it started.
Do you have an idea for talking to them about what the lifespan of this program is?
Yeah, um, so the, the product that we're looking at doing is starting to replace the cameras we have, about two hundred twenty-five, add an additional forty or fifty of them that are gonna be the A I base. And as we start moving forward, and we start, uh, looking at the lifespan of our existing cameras, we'll start systematically replacing them, the, the cameras that have the A I technology built into their applications. So the lifespan of this thing is based on, you buy the cameras, you work with them, with upgrades through, um, spermware updates, and then they recommend anything that happens with further replacement cameras. But the actual cost yearly is not as much as if we were doing a lease improvement, because you just, you can update when you want to update, it's working, it works.
Is that where we do that, we lease the camera?
Yeah, we've purchased many of the cameras, um, and, but the idea is we have not, we've only kept up as, as little as we can, not a full way, full, full, we've had a very high system.
Chief, I'd love to hear the appeal of this, sir.
You know me by now, anything the police can get, we should appreciate, um, it's, uh, some of the I stuff, um, gets really way over my head, it's, it's like Big Brother that we used to hear about, but. Uh, the good thing about it, the good points about it is, um, if we've got a bad guy coming into town, it picks him up and it keeps him, we know where he's at the whole time, so we'll have time to get to it. Uh, that's the big plus that I see, um.
Do we not have that now with the two hundred twenty-five camera?
It costs. Everything costs, and it's amazing, and, and keeping, and keeping the, the clouds, and it's just amazing what it costs now, it's nothing simple anymore, but. Uh, the camera system that showed us and, and, and explained to us is, is something that's real strong, we'd love to have it here in Hartsville. It would, it really puts us up to where we can catch more bad guys.
True.
The efficiency that it will do for them, this program.
Yes, and that's it, that's what I think those are wanting, but.
Even local towns already have it in place, that maybe we can call and ask guys working for them, or?
Yes, sir, um, Myrtle Beach is the closest one to us, um, we, if, if my statistics are right, and, and statistics are fun, but. We've been one of the smallest towns, I think, in the country, that has this sort of system in place, so that'd be a big statement for us. Uh, but Myrtle Beach has this, and they, right after they had the presentation, and we were lucky enough, we were fortunate enough to see that the system working in action, there was a young lady assaulted at a gas station within minutes, they found her. The person in Coker, because this person was picked up immediately, and tracked where they went, um, and the vehicle they took them to, because it's not distracting people, it's tracking, uh, vehicles. And then combined with the power of our licensed light readers, which is also part of this proposal, we'd be able to tag them before they became.
Well, we, we don't have any of that, we, we have cameras, but then somehow we just have to go back and look at cameras in the area where we're breaking. Anytime this camera.
So for instance, uh.
Wait, wait, wait a second, can we go ahead and do the motion and get into discussion before we continue?
Yes, yes. Don't you ask for discussion? Well, ask for just a question, yeah.
Go ahead. Real, real quick, can I, can I get a motion to, uh, approve Resolution?
Certainly, sir.
Motion to say hollers in favor, no, I'm sorry, now we're in discussion, so please go ahead and answer Mr. McGee's question.
Um, so probably have to, right, so what happens is that we have, if we get notified, let's say, incident happened on Fith and, uh, Carolina right here. Physically, we can physically download the, um, material or the video, they can review it, so let's say we have an A I window, we have to watch three hours of video to do that, that is what most camera footage has to do, so it's nothing that we're lighting behind that regard. This allows us to quickly identify, so we're looking for someone in a red shirt, or, you know, this height, go through his parameters and immediately start searching for that person and looking for, and then it still has a person sitting there, but within minutes, it can do what we have to do it happens.
It pulls up every camera that that person is on in the city, you know, in minutes, and I think the video you showed on that court session showed that, showed an example of that. And I looked it up on YouTube, again, that, you know, it's.
And this came from the store, it's really cool, the store in our vice department, who was, we had to keep hitting this up, so they were the ones who found this company, and they reached out to them, so they were the ones who got excited first and looked at it. And so we did a real time demonstration, it really does work, just as they said, it is that person.
Question I had was, um, I know in South Carolina, you cannot use, uh, these cameras to write speeding tickets. Uh, I think of CD on I ninety-five was doing pretty well, doing that for a while, and, and they shut, the state legislature shut them down. But, um, I've noticed in some of the signs that maybe trucks in, in Hartford making sharp turns, they call that, the sign that's leaning, could that be used to identify those?
Funny enough, we just had that report council, um, a gentleman was driving down Fifth Street and took a hard right turn on home to go, what I assume is to one of our lovely companies. And decide, tried to take out one of our brandy circles, it just was replaced with the very same thing, um, so that definitely could be used to identify the vehicle.
I noticed when the, corner of Carolina North.
This is not to, this, the, the, the point of this is not to do petty, uh, little, little things, it's not, it's not to create, and generate revenue, we don't generate revenue off the police, it is to protect. And that is what we're looking at doing, is to be able to react quickly and efficiently, save time, save lives.
And this will be cutting edge for us to do, so.
Cutting.
Well, uh, you and Matt, you have a comment, or take a clip, take a clip, okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution eleven twenty-two oh three, please make it so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ladies and gentlemen, the ayes have it, uh, Resolution eleven twenty-two oh three is approved, and hearing no objection, uh, we stand up the jury. Thank you, everybody.